I want to thank all of you for tuning into the Water Town Hall Forum today. We're dealing with all of the vagaries of Zoom, so hopefully it'll work real well. The order of events will be as indicated on the agenda, if all of you got it. I'm going to review that real quickly, so you all know what it is. First, it's just an overview I'm going to give very quickly. We're going to have a water supply plan presentation by our consultants from Gray and Osborne. We are going to have a leak detection repair program and water meter changeout program presentation by our Public Works Director Mark Rigos. We're going to present just the highlights of the water conservation ordinance, and I will be doing that with our city attorney, Lonnie Lindell. We will also then segue into water conservation incentive program, which we are now putting together. An hour of quick click from the public. Presentations will be brief, and the majority of the time is left to the public. We're hoping this town hall will allow you to share your ideas and comments, so that the final water conservation ordinance is reasonable, fair, and allows all of us to maximize our water efficiency and use. This town hall is also being provided, so North Bend water users have an opportunity to write comments on the water supply plan, which is contemplated and asked for by state law. I received a number of comments on the water supply plan from SLAOW members, and we will forward these comments to the city council. However, please understand that the water supply plan in this portion of the public hearing is to provide North Bend ratepayers an opportunity to provide feedback to the North Bend Water Utility on its future plans for our water system. To the extent that you receive your water from SLAOW, we would ask that you focus your comments on the water conservation ordinance and not the water supply plan. Under the comments, when you want to make a comment, please use the chat function and register your desire to speak on the chat box. You will be called in the order that your name was taken, and comments will be limited to three minutes, and no person will be allowed to speak twice until all have been heard. If you agree with a prior speaker, you can simply say "I agree" versus repeating the same comments, so everyone has an opportunity to be heard. The moderator will unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak, and she will announce those folks in the order in which they appear in the chat box. Avoid restating the same comments as those before you, if you would, and when you speak, indicate your name and address, along with whether you're a SLAOW or a city water customer. The water supply plan public input requires that we identify all city customers subject to the WSP and include their comments. The authority for both the water supply plan and the water conservation plan are found in the State of Washington's RCWs and WACs. Please be aware that we are very open to ideas on the WCO and WSP, and both are in draft form now. We're working on the average water use and penalty section, as well as several others you have commented on already. We have been working hard at analyzing your prior water use for the last five years to come up with a fair and predictable base allocation of water. We also have the city's water hydrologist present, who may assist us during our discussions. However, please note that we will not be basing maximum water use on either an 8,000 or 10,000 square foot lot, but we'll base it on historical data on actual water use for different residential parcels. Now, it's important to note that we don't even take note of the water use until we go into Phase Two or Three, in most cases, not until Three, and that's where we're in a drought already, and we want to be able to deal with the lack of water, because we're not really concerned about that unless we get into a situation which is drought-oriented. I received a number of written comments, and those comments will be forwarded to the council as part of the council's continued public hearing. Further, we plan to consider all your comments tonight in reviewing and revising the water conservation ordinance to present to the council on June 2nd for a second reading and possible adoption. We have brought this to the council at one previous session. We're having this town forum now. We have another meeting on June 2nd, and if the council wishes to continue that and continue to take public input, that is at their pleasure. So they might decide to adopt it, they might decide to continue to work on it. And again, thank you for coming tonight. And so with that, I'd like to jump into the water supply presentation. Mr. Porter of Gray and Osborne will be presenting that, and I think our moderator in the background, who's really making everything happen, Bree Covering, will put a PowerPoint up for that presentation. You ready for that, Bree?
Absolutely. Excuse me, Dave, you mean are we ready for the water system plan PowerPoint? We're still waiting for Russ to get on here. Oh, we got him. Excellent. Okay, Russ. I'm going to share my screen in a second here, everyone.
Okay, can you hear me?
You've got a bit of an echo going on.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get my work computer to work on Zoom, so I'm off my cellphone, so it's going to be a little bit not as good. But anyway, I'm here to talk about the City of North Bend's water system plan. Water system plans are required to be updated every 10 years. It used to be every six years, but now it's every 10. And so that's what we put together, and this is a draft of it. It's required under WAC regulations through the Department of Health, and this informational meeting is also required as part of that process. In short, the plan looks at the city's ability to meet its water system needs. You can go ahead and change to the next slide. It takes a look at anticipated water system demands. We look at historical water use, project forward with anticipated growth, that sort of thing. We look at anticipated water system demands. We evaluate the ability of the water system to meet current and future demands and future regulations. We identify improvements to address any deficiencies, and then we also look at a financial plan to fund those improvements and the ONM. Next. Next slide, there we go. So this is a map of the existing water system facilities. The city has a service area that's shown kind of in that orange color, and you can see that the service area and the city limits, which is shown in black, don't quite overlap. There's some areas outside city limits that are served by city water, and some areas within the city that are served by others. There's two sources in the city. There's Mountsi Springs, and there's the Centennial Well. There's three pressure zones that we call, what we call pressure zones. There's one that kind of serves the downtown and all the area north to Mountsi Springs, and then there's two other pressure zones that go up the hill kind of southwest of town, as you go up to Forrester Woods. There's two booster stations in that area. There's one inner tie with SLAOW, and there's three reservoirs within the system. Next slide. There's also what are called mitigation facilities, and we'll talk a little bit more about these as we go through some of the other slides. But per your water rights and some of the limitations on your sources, you have to do some mitigation for the Centennial Well. And right now, the way it's mitigated is some water is purchased from a source that Seattle, City of Seattle has, Seattle Public Utility has up by Cedar Falls, a place called Hobo Springs. And it is brought around on the Iron Horse Trail and dropped into Boxley Creek whenever water is required. And the reason we do that is that, the city does that, is that the Centennial Well water right has an implication. The city's water right has an implication where whenever in-stream flows are not met in the Snoqualmie River, you have to provide some mitigation water. And there's an algorithm that goes, that's calculated to figure out how much needs to be mitigated, and a signal is, you know, there's some controls that take that amount of water from the SPU system. There's some future mitigation points that are on this plan, and we will talk a little bit more about those towards the end of the presentation. Next slide. This is the water service area, and again, this is a little bit of a repeat of the first slide, but the area in red is what's called your retail service area. That's the area that you serve. There are certain legal obligations that go with that terminology. And then the area within the black is the city limits. And as I mentioned, some of the areas towards the easterly part of town are served by others, not the city of North Bend. Next slide. This is a kind of an encapsulation of water production and water use within the city over the last 20 years. The top line in blue is the production. And what is meant by production is that's the total amount of water that's taken from both water sources to provide water to the city. The line underneath it is orange, and that is the consumption. Now, that's the actual amount of water that's used by the various customers. And then the difference is leakage, or water that's unaccounted for. And that's the line down at the bottom that's kind of in gray. There's a couple of things to look at on this graph that are really kind of interesting. I think the most important one is that over the last 20 years, you can see the overall water use within the city has decreased. Back in 2000, it was about 250,000 gallons a day, and it's since decreased, oh, sorry, 250 million gallons a year, and it's since decreased to about 200 million gallons a year, even though the city's grown some. And you can see that the reason for that is mainly that people have been using less. The orange line, which is the consumption line, shows that that consumption is pretty much been what has driven the decreased production. The leakage, which is a significant thing that we'll talk about in a little bit, is also gone down over time due to a few major pipe projects, probably some meter replacement, you know, some things like that. But it has not gone down as fast in terms of the overall amount of water, so it actually has gone up in terms of a percentage of the production, and that's what the next slide shows. This is just a distribution system leakage over the last, you know, over five years. And it went from 16, 12, 18, 22, 25. You can see it kind of bounces around a little bit, but the goal for most water systems is to have 10% leakage. And so you can see that the North Bend is a little bit above that, even though they have actually brought down the absolute value of the leaking water through some of the projects that have been done. These are the projections that we used in the water system plan moving forward. Back one place, there we go. You know, we kind of went forward with some fairly standard projection, percentage projections based on King County data and city data and whatnot. But we essentially projected out 20 years, looking at a fairly significant population increase. And we kind of go on a high side for the population increase to kind of, you know, stress test parts of the system to make sure that we're you know, set up for looking at deficiencies. And with that, we also projected the production that will be required to support that projected population. Next slide. We went through each individual part of the water system and looked at it in terms of the source. We looked at water quality. The water quality within the water system in both sources is very good. There's no issues with water quality. In 2016, the Department of Health did do a sanitary survey that identified an issue at Mountsi Springs, though, that they would like to see corrected. And that's something that's going to be put in as a capital improvement. Next slide. In terms of source capacity, the city has adequate source capacity to meet projected demands. They also have adequate water rights. The water rights do have caveats, which include those mitigation requirements that I discussed. The limitations for each source. Mountsi Springs can only be used when three CFS, three cubic feet per second, of bypass flow can be maintained. In other words, the water right stipulates that you have to have three CFS going into the, you know, being sent towards the river at all times. And then, as I indicated earlier, the Centennial Well must be mitigated during periods of low in-stream flows in Snoqualmie River. Next slide. In terms of the treatment and the physical source capacity, that's all been sized to meet the maximum production for the future as well. So treatment is not going to be an issue. Next slide. In terms of storage, currently, the storage is adequate. But as we move forward, there's a deficiency of 400,000 gallons by 2030, and a million gallons of storage deficiency in 2040. There's a couple of options. One option, and this is a little bit of a technical option, is that right now, the city includes fire flow storage, standby storage, equalizing storage, and operational storage. But if it's allowed by the city and it's approved by the local fire jurisdiction, you can do what's called nesting, where you put the smaller fire flow and standby into the other one, so you kind of combine those two. And if you do that, you'll have adequate storage. The other option would be to construct additional storage or to do some combination of both. Next slide. The booster stations within the city are adequate for current demand and projected demands, so there's no issues with those other than general maintenance. Next slide. We also did an analysis of the distribution system, you know, the pipe network that's under the streets that serves the city. We looked at providing 30 PSI at peak hour demand throughout the system, which is the minimum required by Department of Health. And we did find a few current fire flow deficiencies within the city limits, mostly in the downtown area, in a few south neighborhoods, and some north neighborhoods, mostly on older piping, some on get-in piping, you know, just places that were either built prior to, you know, kind of modern codes and whatnot. So those were some places that we identified with hydraulic modeling. Next slide. We also looked at the mitigation aspect, since that's really part of the system analysis. Currently, Hobo Springs is the city's only functioning mitigation source. There's some potential other mitigation sources. There was a well that was drilled near the river, looking at it as a mitigation source. The city recently purchased the Cascade Golf Course well with the intent of using it as a mitigation source. There's been some preliminary planning work, looking at a surface water impoundment to store, you know, kind of high-water winter flows, and then releasing it in the summer. And then another one is purchasing SLAOW well water via wholesale agreement. Right now, the mitigation capacity is what limits growth. And so that's kind of one of the key things that we looked at in the water system plan. And the solutions are to increase the mitigation capacity or to look at ways to curtail water use during periods of water shortage. Next slide. One of the key things of that is the SLAOW wholesale agreement is something that's been, negotiations for which have been ongoing. And it is an opportunity to bring in an additional mitigation source. And what that would be would be just to SLAOW well water, hook it up to some existing piping that goes up to that mitigation line from Hobo Springs, and then bring it over to Boxley Creek. Next slide. Water efficiency is a component of the plan that's required by the WAC. And so there's two goals that we put forth in the water use efficiency plan. One is to reduce water consumption by 0.75% per year over the next 10 years. We didn't put this goal as being a very aggressive goal, because, you know, it's obvious from that slide I presented earlier that water efficiency among, you know, consumption consumers has been pretty good. And so that trend is already in place. The one that's a little bit more significant, though, is to reduce the distribution system leakage down to 10% by 2026. And that's a pretty aggressive one, and that's one that could be pretty significant in, you know, is a significant effort in terms of CIPs. There's five water use efficiency measures that will be implemented as part of the water use efficiency plan. Calibrating source and service meters, leak detection of water accounting, some customer education, evaluation and implementing conservation rate structure, evaluate reclaimed water opportunities, and bills that show consumption history. Next slide. The capital improvement program that's summarized in Table 7.2. It's over a 10-year period. It's $9.3 million invested in additional mitigation, upsizes some piping to despire flow, and replaces aging AC mains to tackle that distribution system leakage. The next slide is a capital improvement map that kind of shows where these projects are, and they're kind of labeled there. I don't know how visible it is, people viewing it, but in the document, you can see where those are. And there's a mix of things, including the mitigation, and then also quite a few piping projects. And on top of that, with the next slide, we included just some annual money, starting a couple of years from now, for some AC pipe replacement projects that the city will take a look at, kind of on an annual basis, and figure out which areas they want to replace AC pipes. And so this map shows where those AC, and AC is asbestos concrete piping, and that was a type of piping that was very popular for installation in the 50s and 60s. And it does have a history now of breaking down and being somewhat leaky. So we're thinking that that's kind of the source of a lot of the city's current leakage. Okay, the next slide. The financial program, the existing revenues meet expenses and debt service, but there isn't really any provision that's putting in additional money for needed capital improvements. Operating expenses are predicted to increase slightly, but with the 10-year capital improvement program that we put in there, it can be accomplished with a 6% annual rate increase on three different years, and then sort of the typical 3% annual rate increase on all other years. The final slide. This is sort of the next steps. The plan has been formulated, and they are formulating their responses, and we anticipate getting those in the middle of June. Once we address those responses, then at some point, the city will want to formally adopt the plan and also formally adopt the water use efficiency goals and measures. Once the city has done that, we'll respond to DOH comments and submit a revised plan to DOH for final approval. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Russ. From this, we're going to move into Mark Rigos, the Public Works Director. We'll be talking about leak detection repair program and the water meter changeout program. Mark?
Okay, Dave, can you hear me? Dave? Okay, so city's leak detection program needs to renew. A couple of things here. First off, Russ touched on the city water lines. We have about 40,000 lineal feet, about 15% of city water lines are useful lifespan. There's a 10-year schedule to replace those lines. These lines were built in the 1950s and 60s outside city limits, for the most part, coming from our Mountsi Springs plant. Some of the water lines are crossing underneath creeks and also underneath the middle forks in Snoqualmie River. So those older AC lines that have a useful lifespan of about 40 years or so need to be replaced with ductile iron type pipe or high-density polyethylene pipe, which is rated for 110 years, not the 40 years. So approximate cost for this is somewhere in the $10 million range. So that's a capital project list, number one, the city needs to work on. Number two is there's approximately 1,000 water meters in the city that are also past their useful lifespan. The city is not losing physical water. The city is actually losing revenue in the water fund. So the calibration of these meters is, could be off by as much as 5 or 10%. So I think the city can solve this a lot more quickly within a couple of years at a cost of approximately $1 million. So the leak, the replacement of the AC lines is a much bigger project than the water meters. But both these projects are important. The city needs to make improvements in their water system. That's it.
The next section, see if I can get my video back on. The next section will be to talk about water conservation ordinance. Rather than, rather than going through that, there we go. I think we have some video now. Rather than going through that, I'm going to highlight a couple of areas that have really attracted a lot of attention. And our city attorney, Lonnie Lindell, is here to chime in, and Lonnie, feel free to do that, as I go through it. I think one of the one sections we've had the most comment on is 13.50.040, entitled "Base Allocation of Water." And this section talks about the Public Works Director developing an allocation for each customer account. And it goes on to talk about some of the residential accounts, looking at perhaps lot sizes. And what we found out through the data is that there's very little correlation between lot size and use of water, excepting for the fact that we have the largest water use in the 1-5 acre category of residential. So it seemed logical, looking at that data, that we not tie it to lot size, but we'd rather look at the historical use on each property. And if you happen to see an anomaly where there's an awful lot of water coming through compared to the normal usage, that we would take a look at, do we have meter problems? Do we have a leak? Or is there just an excessive amount of water being used? And we're not really interested in any of that data until we get into a drought situation, because that's when we really want the conservation to kick in. So we are working with our water consultant to develop a database to be able to look at historic consumption and to get ourselves in a position where we can see these anomalies when they occur and work with the property owner to help them control their consumption. They might have a meter replacement necessary. They might have a leak they don't know about, and we will work with them to try to correct that. So that's sort of the direction we're heading there. Another area where we have a lot of discussion, and we're certainly willing to listen to all of the comments today and then to listen to our council, as this goes on the 2nd of June, and that is under the penalty section. There is quite a jump in penalties from properties that are located within the city limits to those that aren't. And so I think there's been some concern that it's too dramatic a change. And so we're certainly willing to open that discussion and talk to our council about what they think is reasonable. And we have gone to our CED committee, which is three members of the city council, to take the updates on the work that we're doing and get some input from them. And we know that the council's going to have some more suggestions, particularly given the input they get today. Lonnie, do you see any other areas of massaging that's needed in this ordinance from what you've seen? Did you unmute, Lonnie?
Lonnie needs to unmute herself.
I got it. Thank you, thank you. I do want to comment, Dave, just on some of them. I'm trying to follow the chats also about your preliminary remarks. And we very much want to hear from all the public. much want to hear from all the public. The, the, there's different state laws that govern what we're doing as far as the water system plan and setting water efficiency goals. The entire water system plan, which is that large comprehensive document we do now every 10 years, WAC 246290100 sub 82 specifically requires us to take that forward and get comments from, and I'll quote, "our water system consumers." Now, there is a section called Water Efficiency Goals, which is in both the Water System Plan and reflected in our Water Conservation Ordinance. And under WAC 246290830, Water Efficiency Goals, we need to hear from the entire public, and that's partly our Water Conservation Ordinance, and then any Water Efficiency Goals. But I think Dave's preliminary comments are, we'd really like you, if you're not a North Bend utility consumer, to drill down more on those water conservation issues, because that is where we're trying to get the general public comment. And if you're a ratepayer, we'd really like to get some comments from you about some of the other, you know, if there's a capital project you don't agree with, or, or somewhere else you'd like us to go. So, thanks, Dave.
Good. In addition to the ordinance itself, we are reaching out to Seattle and some other communities that have taken the lead in water conservation, and looking at the opportunity of joining, joining the saving water partnership. They offer an incentive program for changing out fixtures in the house, and for changing out landscaping and irrigation, and sort of all things water to reach good water conservation. So we plan to have incentive programs where if, if it's found, say, in restaurants or in your home, that you'd like to change those fixtures out and get a more water efficient system, that we would offer, and are putting together a program to offer some financial incentives to encourage people to reach better conservation. And through their program, they've had a lot of experience with other folks, and they actually run the entire program themselves. If we buy into that, we would have access to all of their incentive programs. And I, and I want to say that whether we do it through that program, or we do it through our own program, we believe that we can't have conservation without incentives. So we're going to make a commitment to putting a certain amount of our revenues aside, and we are also looking at hiring a water operations specialist who will operate this program, and will do the outreach, and will consult with people and show them what they can do to lower their water consumption. So even though that program hasn't been totally put together yet, we have had conversations with the Water Saving Partnership. I've worked for, our city has had a very active program like this, and we've started some of the outreach efforts in your utility bills, and in the webpage, and, and other information disseminating avenues to give people an idea of what those water conservation opportunities are. So we'll be building that a little more in the future. And we have taken a lot of your public comments on what could be involved in that, and incorporated them in the program that we're going to move forward with. But we've taken probably a little bit more time than we thought we would, but I think we're ready now, and we wanted to reserve most of this time for taking questions from the public. And in terms of doing that, what we would ask you to do is to use that chat box for posting your questions. And we have a couple of staff members that are looking at the questions, to take them in chronological order, and they will be announcing who's next. They will unmute you. They will time you for three minutes, and we want to make sure that we give enough time to get the comments out, and we leave enough time for everybody to speak. So what we'll start with now, Bree, I think you're working with Jill, if you have questions that are in the chat box and people, please put them in now, so that we can make the best use of our time. Why don't we start off, Bree, with the first question?
All right. So it looks like our first person that we have for comment is, I think it's Matt Barowalt, the Snoqualmie Tribe. Matt, if you could actually unmute yourself to provide your three-minute comment, that would be excellent.
Sure, thanks. This is Matt. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I just want to say on behalf of the tribe, that, that, you know, the tribe is really pleased that the city is looking at improving their water conservation and taking these steps on the ordinance. And, you know, we recognize that it's a, it's a work in progress, and appreciate that you're open to, to comments on the Water Conservation Ordinance. And, you know, it seems, it's great that there's a lot of citizen involvement in water conservation. You know, the, the, the city's in a unique position in that it's up at the, the headwaters of our, of our watershed, and, you know, the, the fish need water in the river, and the farmers need water in the river, and the residents need water as well. And, and, you know, everyone needs the same amount of water, or needs this water, and there's always so much. And with climate change, it's kind of looking like during the summers, there may be less. And so, you know, it's just, we're really happy that folks are, are starting to think about what we all can do that we can live with, that, you know, we can, we can make this work go in forward, because, you know, now's the time to start, to start thinking like that. So this is a really positive thing with the Water Conservation Ordinance. And, and again, we just really appreciate that the city's looking at doing this. So, so thanks.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Matt.
Hey, this is Jill Green. And I just wanted to remind everyone, if you want to comment, then please put your name in the chat box, and then we will call on you. So far, we only had Matt say that he wanted to comment.
Don't be shy, folks. Are there any other comments that people would like to make, or questions that they have?
We do.
I see Matt McManus, and I see a few people on the chat box.
We have got Matt. Matt McManus is the next person who's provided name for comment. Matt, if you want to unmute yourself, and please provide your three-minute comment, go for it.
Hey, guys. I appreciate you guys putting together this discussion, this forum. Just like the map before me, it's good to get some of this data out to the public. I, I am curious about some of the assumptions made in the proposal, though. I'm part of the Salal water system, and, you know, my understanding is that as a co-op here, we, majority of the people I, I've talked to aren't looking at voting at being absorbed. So I'm curious what the city of North Bend's Plan A is, or Plan B, however you want to phrase it, if they're unable to absorb additional wells to meet mitigation issues.
Good. Mark, would you like to handle that one from the public works standpoint?
Yeah, we're looking at a, creating a mitigation portfolio. So the first mitigation source, what we have online, which is 99.9% reliable, is Hobo Springs. It, it, it almost always has water, much more water than we ever need for mitigation. So that system's working really well. Some of the other mitigation systems we have is Cascade Golf Course. We're looking to get that online in the next year or two. We're also looking at a mitigation reservoir for the city where we hold water at high flows and release in August, September, October, when the flows are lower. We're also looking at the Salal wells as a potential water supply agreement between City of North Bend and Salal Water Association. We're also looking at a potential Hobo Springs 2, where we're catching more water from the hillside, and mitigating Snoqualmie River with, with cold water there in the, in the, in the fall, late summer, early fall months, too. So it's, 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 we're looking at doing this through three, four, or five sources potentially of mitigation water.
Thanks, Mark. And that's what I was trying to clarify is, I'm part of the Salal group, and if that well in that group isn't absorbed by the city, which it, my understanding, most people I've talked to are interested in that because we don't want city water, or influence on our water either. It, will your current, will your other three, four, you know, mitigation areas be enough to meet requirements in the conservation end and the water demands for City of North Bend?
Well, I think this water conservation ordinance certainly helps out as well. So, and, and you've seen that in the, the tables that Russ Porter provided, that shows the city of North Bend's water consumption has actually decreased over the last 20 years, but the population has increased. So it's a lot about efficiency of the fixtures and the new homes that are being built. And people are just smarter about conserving water than they used to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mark. Okay, our next person to comment, Scott Parrish. Scott, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself for your three-minute comment.
Hey, I'm frustrated that we're back here again, a, a year after we asked that this not happened. It looks to me like there's the same draft legislation here with the same flaws as before. As an example, it looks like a water hose, if my relatives were to show up with a travel trailer, and I were to hook up a water hose to their trailer, that would not abide by this ordinance, because it wouldn't have a positive pressure doohickey on it. We live in an area where if you tied my feet to the bottom of a barrel, we get so much rain, I would drown. I think it's kind of ridiculous that we need this level of legislation. I would go back to the same thing as last year. We should do education of the public. It sounds like that's already working. The public is using less water. Let's continue with what's already working, rather than trying to pass legislation.
Scott, thank you very much for your comment. Larry Stockton, we've got for our next person to comment. Larry, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say specifically to the staff and council, please look at my written comments. In the interest of time, I won't attempt to read those. But what I heard in the presentation was encouraging. And I would like to say, before I go further, that I would encourage you to keep this open longer, because I think there'll be a lot of questions that will need further answers. But I would support your concept of implementing water loss reduction via the CIP and water meter recalibration. I think that's important. But I would definitely oppose the idea of using conservation as contemplated in the Conservation Ordinance, as creating a basis of supply for the new growth. I think that your provision to alter Section 315040 to use historical water use is a big improvement over a average lot size. And I would just close by noting that I think all of the various mitigation alternatives need to be nailed down and in hand before you approve the growth that's going to rely on them. Because if you don't do that, you will leave the existing rate holders and water users responsible for the conservation and payment of fees that you didn't accomplish before those people were connected. And I will go ahead and close in the interest of other people, and thank you for the effort to do this over Zoom.
Thank you, Lawrence. Our next speaker for comment is Mike Thomas. Mike, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself?
Thanks. Thanks for holding this Watertown Hall. I think it's very important for citizens to be able to discuss and comment openly on matters of water, considering the city's considerably checkered history on water rates management stemming back for quite some time. I'm going to focus my comments really on two areas, the Water System Plan and Water Conservation and Water Use Efficiency, as clearly all three of these items are quite linked. On the Water System Plan, and since representatives from Goldar Associates are present, and I'll just ask a few questions with, does, does the city still believe that Salal has sufficient quantity and rate of mitigation water to be considered a feasible mitigation source? That's question one. On question two, I noticed that the existing Water System Plan draft as of March 2020 is lacking really two key sections. One is the wellhead protection area, which really defines potential areas of potential cat contaminants and travel time zones of things that, that may be of concern in proximity. The old study that the city had was very basic. So I'm curious as to the outcome also that Goldar was contracted for with respect, with respect to redefining the wellhead protection areas. With respect to water use efficiency, I noticed the Water System Plan is missing the city's required distribution loss report as filed. That should be filed with DOH and are part of required meetings on water use efficiency. Those numbers also are substantially changed from the reports that are in the Water System Plan. I do have comments on the Water Conservation Ordinance. I'm very concerned that its intent is to apply to Salal members. I personally am scratching my head as to why this should apply to Salal within the city, that is a completely independent water association, that is not dependent on city water supply, and even the claims about Salal's water pricing. Salal has much higher pricing when it comes to higher uses of residential demand relative to the city. I'm very concerned by this. And also, I would echo that the existing details in the Water Conservation Ordinance really don't provide enough detail for citizens to know how to comply. And I respect the comments from Mr. Miller, saying, you know, we're looking at changing them. But when you want to establish an, an ordinance that has substantial penalties, citizens need to know how to comply. Citizen might have additional usage for either landscaping. If you're also looking at past usage, you know, what if a, what if a consumer has more residents in their home or guests? I'm very concerned about the application of, of this in general into Salal. And lastly, I think this ordinance does not do justice to our rural nature. Certainly, I think we have risks of fire as a result of not watering sufficiently. We have many grasses. We live in a woodland-urban interface. I'm also concerned about negative impacts to the river.
Thank you so much. Your comment.
If we can't water, then how do, how do we stop runoff and erosion that our stormwater impacts in the fall and first rain? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Our next commenter is Jane Ulander. Jane, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself?
Yes. My comments are, as a citizen of North Bend, expecting excellent representation by our elected city council and members and mayor. I want to state that I appreciate the work you're doing on this subject. And I also want to state that access to clean, safe, public utility system water is a basic human right. I'm in favor of being conservative and sensible in the use of water, which is, of course, essential to all our lives. The residents, and especially the property owners and taxpayers of North Bend, have contributed to our water system through taxes and regularly paid rates, as we will continue to do. And my biggest point is turning off anyone's water should not be a part of the ordinance that gets put into place. This is regarding 13.50.150 notices and penalty section of the draft. I think there are many others who would agree with me that turning off any individual or family's water permanently, or for any length of time, for any reason, especially punitively, or with no recourse to have it reactivated, is not how we would want our neighbors to be treated, or our city to be managed, our city's water, that is specifically. My questions are, in addition to this comment, where did the ideas proposed and outlined in the draft for our City of North Bend Water Strategy and Management details come from? So for example, did they originate from residents, including our So, for example, did they originate from residents, including our elected council members? Or did they come from outside agencies, entities, or individuals? And if they came from outside entities, what are the names of those sources outside of our city? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jane. The next person we have to comment is Ann Bailey. Ann, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And thank you for having this meeting. My comment is kind of, first off, is the reason that I believe, I know, and what you have stated is that you need this water conservation because you do not have enough water currently if there is a dry year. And in looking at the draft Golda report from 2018 or 19 and looking at the water supply plan and running data through there, you currently, if there's a dry year like 2015, there will not be enough mitigation water currently with the current demand. And I want to, my question is, does the city recognize this? And in recognition of that, is the city going to ever, going to issue any new water certificates?
All right. Ann, thank you for your comment. No one has a response to that. We're going to move to our next, let's see, our next commenter is Jean Buckner. Jean, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for having this meeting. I just want to jump on Ann's last comment because it is clear, and even Golda admits it in your new water system plan, that the city does not have sufficient water to mitigate or pay the river back in the event we have another dry year like 2015. As you guys likely know, our group, well, the Friends of the Snoqualmie Valley Trail and River have written several letters to you, to the Department of Ecology, and to your attorneys, just one this past week, asking you, pleading with you to please stop issuing water certificates until you have a current water system plan, which is at least five years overdue. Your current one has expired. And until you know that you have a plan ready to go to mitigate the river, which currently you do not. And I don't believe that you should be expecting a water conservation plan to fill that bill completely. I believe in water conservation strongly. But I don't think that residents should be asked to fill that bill, that that burden should go on their backs completely. And so I'm asking you folks again to please consider stopping the issuance of water certificates until you get this problem resolved. And especially, it feels quite disingenuous to be asking residents to stop, you know, watering their yards or whatever the consequence would be for any final water conservation plan while you're continuing to issue water certificates to new developments. Comment and question, will you please stop issuing water certificates until you have a water system plan in place and until you have current capable mitigation sources available? Thank you.
All right. Jean, thank you very much. Looks like we don't have any additional commenters at this time who are asking to comment. So if staff have anything else that they would like to say or address, please unmute yourself and do so.
Questions asked, Bree, that we can go back and and deal with. I think if we go back to Mike Thomas's question, the first one, does the city believe that Salau has adequate water for mitigation supply? I would say either Mark, either you or Cheyenne Okafor, Russ could handle that.
Yeah, I can answer that question. I think Michael Thomas had three questions. I got the first two down. I don't know if I got the third one. But his first question was, yeah, does the city believe that Salau have, has adequate water mitigation? And the city believes, yes, that Salau does have adequate mitigation water up at their wellfields. We've been assured of that from our hydrogeologists, Golda associates, that there's plenty of water available there for mitigation for the city if the city is able to make a water supply agreement happen with Salau Water Association. I think his second question had to do with a wellhead protection plan. And so the City of North Bend's been working on that in February and March. I think it got slowed down a little bit because of coronavirus. But it should be close to completed or already completed. Don DeBerg, if you're on this call, can you unmute yourself and chime in on what the status is of the groundwater protection plan?
Yeah, so the wellhead protection plan was completed. I don't know the exact date, but the the draft version was sent to Department of Health and Department of Ecology as an attachment to the water system plan. So they are currently reviewing it.
And we should hear back from Department of Health and Department of Ecology by mid-June. I think we already heard back from Department of Ecology, but Department of Health, they have up to 90 days to review, correct? And we submitted that information to them in mid-March. Is that correct, Don?
That is correct. So we're expecting a response from Department of Health by about June 15.
Okay. Thank you, Don. And then Michael Thomas's third question, I think it had to do with distribution. But maybe, Dave, you wrote it down. I didn't quite get it all.
I did. The water system plan, he claims it's missing water loss reports that need to be included in the plan in order to make it complete. That was the comment.
Yeah, you know, I'll have to take this offline. I guess the city knows we have a, you know, direct service leakage issue right now that we need to resolve. So, Russ, did you want to chime in on that?
Yeah, we made a reference to including those documents. The city is required to send in a document every year to Department of Health on their water loss leakage. And we made a reference that it was included in Appendix I, but it looks like we failed to include that document. So we'll put that in the next draft.
Okay. Thank you, Russ.
Those documents are public record at Department of Health if people are interested.
Let's see, I'm trying to look at some others that we, comments that we might have had. I can tell you that we do hear Jane Ulander's comments. I did get written comment from her. And we will be working with our council to deal with the issue of water turnoffs. We currently have water turnoffs where people don't pay their bill routinely. And we have payment plans for them to visit where they get their water turned on or left on. And so there are some circumstances where people are not, are delinquent. This is different because it would be part of the notice and penalties. And I think one of the things we've heard loud and clear that we want to incorporate is softening some of these things so that they're more acceptable to the public. And by the way, in our comments also was, where do these ideas come from? We've looked at a number of water conservation ordinances from the saving water partnership cities. We've looked at some from outside of the state. And we've kind of pulled together what we thought were the most prevalent pieces of legislation that all of them had in common. Doesn't mean it's perfect. It means it's something to start to work with. But we do hear your comments there. To the question of not having any more water hookups, I think the difficulty we run into there is we are required by the Growth Management Act to provide services to folks who ask for it in our city. We also have that issue of property rights, which is an extremely important issue. And so in order to do anything as draconian as cutting off water completely, we want to make sure through these studies and through our consultants that we have explored all of the opportunities for mitigation, for conservation, and for continuing to have economic viability. We all know right now, when we shut down the economy for a couple of months, what it can do to a community. And we already have a natural break on the system, which our sewer plant has provided. So it has slowed growth down, and it will for another two years. So I don't see any reason not to explore good stewardship and good fiduciary management of water as the first option, and that's what we're doing.
Dave, if I could follow up on that in response to, I believe, it's alone growth. Our comment, why we are doing this is our actual centennial well permit requires that we implement conservation measures. And as a water purveyor, we have a duty to do so, including water efficiency goals in that water system plan. So it is under the wax that Russ referred to and also state law. But actually, the express terms of our centennial well permit is why we're doing this. It is something so that we can be compliant with our permit and also state law.
Could we go back to, thank you, Lundy. Could we go back to Bree? And Bree, have there been additional questions that have come into the chat room? Or is there anybody who spoke already, if we're done with questions, who would like to pose a few more?
Yes, we actually do have another person who'd wish to comment. It looks like Jeff Krueger. Jeff, if you would be able to unmute yourself, please.
Yes, I have. Thank you. Jeff Krueger, 13709 457 Southeast and Wood River. First, as I said on the last meeting you guys had, it seems like this has become either you're for conservation or you're against it. I think the vast majority of us are for it, but we just see this as kind of an egregious way for the city to accomplish the purpose. And I think you can see from the comments here that we are all somewhat incredulous as to how this is kind of coming about. At some point, even with conservation, we're going to run out of water if we continue to allow further construction. And I own properties for development, but I also know that when I buy a piece of property, there's no guarantee in the future for what I will be able to use that property for if there's issues with water rights or anything else. So I think it's a little bit misleading when the city says, well, we've just got to, you know, allow everybody to build because you've got a property right. Those of us that have already built, that have already lived here or bought existing properties with homes on them here have property rights that are starting to be infringed upon. I would ask first, how in the world did we come up with 8,000 square feet for the average lot size? You know, that just doesn't seem representative of the overall area that you're talking about in North Bend. Secondly, in keeping with our smaller-town rural character, the punitive nature of this, in my opinion, is egregious, and my neighbors agree. First, why is there any fine at all for non-city water users? We're not using city water. If our mitigated water from Salau and the other areas doesn't go back into the city, then why would you want to charge us for it right up front? Secondly, so first of all, why is there any charge at all for non-city users? Secondly, why in the world is there such a difference in a charge? Why is there any difference at all for a city, for a fine for a city water user versus non-city? Secondly, why in the world is it so egregious and so punitive when you have a $25 fine for a city water user versus $1,000 and $100 for the second one versus $2,500? There's no other reason than that you're trying to punish the Salau users who do not want to be part of the City of North Bend's water program. The dry lots are going to become a hazard when we get fires blowing in or if we do have fires. You know, I don't know why the punishment is, would seem to be encouraging voluntary conservation. All that does is get people angry and they want to push back. Last, why isn't there a graduated rate for larger lots? We've got a variety of different lots. If you're going to start including Salau users, there's a variety of different lots in some of the more recently incorporated areas of North Bend. And why isn't that being taken into consideration? You can have graduated rates. The last thing is, the water times that you have do not allow anybody to do any hand watering during the day when they can do it specifically versus having a large irrigated system. And that would also seem to me to go against the conservation. Somebody wants to get out and water certain plants or the grass by hand. To have to do that in the middle of the night doesn't seem very reasonable. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Looks like at this point, we do not have any other people requesting to comment.
Bree, maybe give a little bit of response to Jeff's comments. Jeff, you got through?
Hey, Dave, could you speak into the microphone, please? We're having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Jeff, we did hear you when you stood up and spoke at the last airing of this. Your comments regarding the 8,000-size lot and.
Can somebody tell me, can they hear us or not?
Dan, please mute yourself.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, so we are doing away with the lot size argument. And we are going to historic use. And so that is not an issue anymore. We found out there was not a direct correlation. And we would not want to use a larger or a graduated scale for water use with lot size because we find through Golda's work, and they do have all of the consumption figures, that there isn't a direct correlation going from a small lot to a large lot. So what we think is a better, more accurate way to do it is look at the historic use and allow that use to continue unless there's anomaly, an anomaly. So we heard you there and we think you're right. So we're going to a different metric. The other thing is, we're willing to consider what those penalties might be. I think the reason behind the original difference is we assume that the larger lots that were in the county were using a greater amount of water because of irrigating agricultural land. But now that we look at that, we're finding that that isn't necessarily the case. So we're revisiting both, the metric we use to determine what's an unusually large amount of water being used. And secondly, when we review that, we're also reviewing the fines. So thank you for, you know, contributing towards the changes that we are making to this ordinance. Are there some other folks, Bree, that would like to come back who have already spoken?
Yes, it looks like Councilmember Garcia would like to ask a question. If you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself, Chris?
Okay, so I want to address Mr. Krueger's comment about the fines because I'm under the impression that the difference in fines is not for Salau users. It is for City of North Bend customers that are not in the city limits and have the larger lots. But they are served by City of North Bend water, not Salau water. Is that still not the case or am I misinterpreting that?
You are correct.
Thank you.
So in other words, the intent was never to have the ordinance punish Salau users. And although Dave indicated that generally, based on the data that Golda went back and looked at five years' consumption data, there's no discernible difference whether you have a 5,000-square-foot lot or 8,000-square-foot lot. There is somewhat of a discernible difference once you get over an acre because we have some, the one to five there is. And I think those do need to be treated differently because they use more water. And we were reported early on that that was one of our biggest problems is folks outside of city limits in unincorporated King County oftentimes have five-acre lots. It's required through the county. And oftentimes, a lot of that can be lawn or landscaping. And the real use on water is oftentimes irrigation. I guess I'd also like to comment, I think this is Michael Thomas that asked this question, you know, what have we done to reduce water use? Why has it gone down when we've seen this growth? And your staff asked that same question because it's so counterintuitive. If you add people, they're using washing machines, toilets, it should have the opposite effect. But what Golda, our hydrologist, has shown us through the data is these smaller, this new construction, more dense, using more efficient appliances has actually resulted in water use going down. in water use going down. When your council downzoned a lot of your city to slow growth and didn't allow the 5,000 or the 8,000 square foot lot that required minimum 18,000 square foot lots, on their studies, it actually bumped up and increased water consumption projected into the future. And the reason is it's landscape irrigation is folks on larger lots have more landscape and have more lawn, and that's really what drains that water resource.
Thank you, Landy. Bree, do you have any other people that would like to speak?
Let's see here. We have no other, oh, it looks like we do have one person who would like to speak, Jean Buckner again. Jean, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Yes, thank you. Landy, I understand that per unit water use goes down with the new appliances. That makes perfect sense. But the total water consumption of North Bend certainly goes up with the addition of new units. Is that correct?
And yeah. No, that's not what we're finding, Jean. And I know it's very counterintuitive. If you're adding houses and you're adding bodies, the total water use would go up. But if you are converting a large area that had been landscaped previously, that's the only thing that can explain it to me. I think also our existing residents are changing out appliances. I think people are more concerned about water conservation and maybe aren't using as much water. We think that all contributes to it.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, Landy, that, you know, folks are changing out their toilets and becoming more water wise. But it's not a function of increased development with these new units that's reducing the water consumption. It's all those things that you just discussed. So, you know, I don't look at every new water connection as, oh, boy, we're going to reduce the total consumption of water in the city of North Bend.
Well, I would say, though, that when we're looking at undeveloped parcels and our hydrologists are doing the analysis to say, what are those folks going to use for water going forward? If we had left the zoning at four dwelling units an acre, much smaller, like those 5,000 square foot lots, it results in less water usage than these larger estate type lots, kind of the bridal trail lots and whatnot. Their numbers exponentially increase. So you have one house, it reduces traffic, you only have one car, but those folks use a lot more water than those smaller lot size houses.
Right. And they provide more trees, more shade, more habitat, a different quality of life than, you know, East Issaquah. So I hear you and I just, I just don't see that packing development in like East Issaquah is going to get us to a better place.
No, no, that's not what I was saying. I'm just saying that statistically, it's kind of an interesting anomaly. Yeah.
Right. Thank you very much, Jean. And it looks like we have another person who has a question or comment. That would be Councilmember Elwood, if you would mind unmuting yourself.
Sure, thank you. I'm kind of, I guess, taking a step back and listening to some of the spirit behind some of the conversation. Mr. Krueger pointed out that in the document, he gave a very specific example of where it says non-city customers, which one could interpret that we're talking about non-city of North Bend water customers, which could target Salau. What I'm hearing is a lot of this targeting of Salau coming out of this, and I want to make sure that, you know, that's not what's happening here, but what it's pointing out. And then Mr. Thomas made another point about there aren't enough details for folks who may have, if we look at historical data and you have visitors come to your house for a week and suddenly your water usage goes up and now you're getting penalized. What is telling me is that there's some cleanup in the document to make sure as we move this forward and evolve this, that those specificities, maybe, I don't know if all the details can be in there because that would be a huge table, but at least some of the specificities around who it is that we're exactly talking about needs to be a little bit more precise. But speaking to the detailed piece and usages and things like that, I wonder if Mark, you could give an example or a scenario where this penalty table would come to light? Because I know in some of the conversations that we've had, it hasn't been about we need to stick it to the abusive users, there's a dialogue, there's communication, there's a whole nurturing process, which may not be reflected in this particular document as it's drafted. But I wonder if you could just give a, you know, what that kind of scenario, how that scenario would play out in one of those extreme cases so that folks can kind of wrap their head around what you guys have been telling us that the objective is here?
Yeah, sure, Brendan, I can try to take that on. Last year, for example, it was a fairly dry summer, July, August, and we received direction from city council to educate the public. And we did that on our website, mailers, et cetera, and we saw the demand for water, the consumption of water go down. So just getting the word out, people see it on Seattle Times, email notifications, website blast, that's one part of it. This conservation ordinance takes it a little bit further. We're not looking to be punitive in any ways. It would be an education outreach. So if we saw, if we saw a violation of water, we might write them a letter if they were spraying, you know, water into the street or across the sidewalks. We're certainly not going to come down hard on any resident, whether they're North Bend water customer or Salau water customer. We'll just inform them and won't take any immediate action other than just a kind of a heads up. And one of the reasons that I think we have this in our in Salau service areas, two of the largest projects in city of North Bend are in Salau Water Service Area. Those are the two largest subdivisions happening. So, but again, it's all about education. This is not being done to be punitive in any manner. And last year, we saw that decrease in water usage with the education and we just want to continue to beat that drum. This is only going to come about once every five years, seven years, eight years when we have a drought summer. Last year, the rains came in late September, October, and so the rivers became full again. So that was really good news.
And Mark, I want to comment on Councilmember Elwood's request for greater clarity. If you look in the penalties section, the statement, city customers, it's actually capitalized, which means it's a defined term. And if you go back to the definitions section, which is on the, I think, the second page of the document, you'll see the definition of city customers includes North Bend water utility customers and Salau Water Association members. So it expressly states that both Salau Water Association members and North Bend utility customers would only be subject to that lower penalty if they were located within city
Thank you, Landy. And thank you, Councilmember Elwood. It looks like we have one more person who would like to comment, and that is Richard Formasano. Richard, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. Just a few comments. Overall, in when I'm reading the ordinance, it does come across as a negative. There is one, I thought, very good part in it with regard to the under new construction. I believe it was 1350.080 that I said doesn't require, but recommends that new construction look at doing things in terms of rainwater collection and other less invasive irrigation methods rather than using potable water. And I think that's great. And I would actually encourage the city instead of, instead of as a recommendation, going forward maybe in the North Bend Municipal Code and actually requiring for new developments that rainwater collection be used for irrigation purposes. And maybe even further than that with a little research, there are other countries and other states that use rainwater collection for helping with their sanitation. So just a thought there in terms of taking that positive and maybe ratcheting up a little bit in a North Bend Municipal Code for new development. Again, on the negative side, I guess, when I read the ordinance, I'm kind of wondering why we, why we need the ordinance at all. The education efforts, the water system plan that you're writing with all the water use efficiency goals and the, and the conservation measures in terms of education seem to be working. I would, I would recommend continuing on that tact rather than an ordinance that comes across as, as negative as you've heard from many of the citizens today. And, and move forward in that regard. And in terms of high water users, maybe, maybe city needs to look at a more graduated water rate. If the concern is large water use being out of the normal for certain groups or types, maybe the water rate structure needs to have a closer look and, and therefore maybe not need the ordinance at all and have to worry about monitoring and, and penalizing and then collecting payments and all of that. So that's some comments for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Regarding, let's see, any more folks who would like to provide a comment? Lisa Stefani had a question directed toward Landy. She says, I am unincorporated King County and with Salau. As I read it, we are subject to the higher penalty, correct?
Yes, as it's currently drafted, they would be subject to the higher penalty, although as David mentioned, because we now have five years of consumption data, we're trying to drill down a little more narrowly so that we really address, we, we have some very large estate type lots in unincorporated King County, which do a lot of irrigating and do a lot of irrigating when the river is low and it hurts the river. So we're trying to figure out a way to drill down and address those parcels, those heavily landscaped large parcels. And, you know, the hope is, is that we'll have a more refined penalty when we take it back to council on the second. And we will, we'll have a more refined penalty. I can't say what that will be, but we're working on it to make it fair. The goal is to make it fair and equitable.
Thank you, Landy. It doesn't appear that we have any other people wishing to comment. Oh, actually, we do. Councilmember Garcia would like to provide a comment if you would mind unmuting yourself.
So I'm super confused now because I thought we just said that Salau customers were not part of the larger fine system.
So they are not if they live within the city's corporate boundaries or UGA. But there are some, Salau's boundary goes far beyond the city of North Bend, and there's many Salau properties that are in unincorporated King County. The folks that we heard testimony from today were Wood River folks before this, this most recent testimony. They do live within city limits and they would only be subject to the lower fine. But if someone lives in unincorporated King County, and the theory behind that, Councilmember Garcia, is, as Dave mentioned earlier, you do have a legal obligation to deliver water and sewer urban services within your urban growth area. You could elect to reduce your water service area, you'd have to go through a process to do that. But the state law, the Growth Management Act, is not mandate that you deliver water to folks in unincorporated King County, but you would have to reduce your water service area.
If Salau is delivering water to them, that's not us.
That's correct. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. She's, you are.
She's a Salau customer.
Yeah, no, you're, the ordinance does not go, go beyond your corporate limits. So.
Can you repeat that lady's question again?
Yeah, so I'm sorry. She's, she's an unincorporated King County, she's not within the city limits, and she gets her water from Salau. Then the ordinance would not be applicable to her because you can't expand your regulatory authority beyond your city limits. So I'm sorry for the confusion.
Thank you, Landy. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. It doesn't appear that we have any other people who would wish to comment at this time.
I just wanted to add two cents to, I think it was Richard's comment a minute or two ago about the rainwater harvesting program, underground tanks with a pump to a sprinkler system. I think it's a great idea. I've designed a number of those in Seattle in areas, and it does add costs to the, to the project, to the development. But, you know, for those months in August, September, October, it's nice to have a spare 1,000 gallons underneath your driveway or underneath your lawn area that could be used your irrigation source for those months. I'd be open to something like that, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Looks like we have one more, one question from Jean Buckner. Jean, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself?
Yes, thank you. I'm asking when the city requires our final comments on the water system plan. I mean, we, we responded to your public notice on the environmental impact statement, and we're very careful not to mention the greater water system plan issues because we assumed there was going to be another public notice that we could then respond to, but it never came. So my question is, how long do we have to comment on the water system plan and when are those comments due?
Landy, you want to take that or me?
Well, the public hearing is, we haven't taken the first draft. I mean, I'm going to have to look at when that's scheduled to go before council, but it's not scheduled till the 16th, correct? The water system plan?
We're going to have two city council meetings on it. We haven't scheduled the second yet. The first one's either June 2nd or, but I believe it's June 16th is the first reading, and the second one could be July 7th or July 21st. Not sure yet. So you have, so Jean, you have ample time. You have another month, month and a half to submit your comments to, to city council, to staff on, on the water system plan.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Mark. Next, we do have someone else who'd like to comment, and that would be Councilmember Of course, you're going to have to unmute.
I'm slow, okay? I'm a old, I can't move my mouse that fast. Okay, two things. First and foremost, I think I'm going to speak for everybody on the council here. We'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight. I mean, it's Tuesday night, it's a beautiful day, and you people have all taken times out of your day to come and talk to us. This water conservation ordinance is very much a work in progress. As you can see from my comments, we're trying to get our heads around it, too. I mean, don't forget that this applies to us as well as everybody else. The second thing that's come up a little bit is new construction. And I want everybody to know that the council has had conversations, and we've talked about this at CED. There will be new conservation measures put into code for new construction that will address conservation measures, and the city will require new growth to be built to a different standard in regards to conservation. I don't know what that looks like yet because we haven't even had a chance to address it, but that is something that is coming. And we fully understand that any new house will have to have a different system in place than what we're currently using to achieve these, these measures that might be, you know, stricter requirements on, in our low-flow appliances, plumbing. We've talked about gray water recycling, we've talked about sprinkler systems. So there's lots of things coming. The final thing is that we don't take lightly the fact that we have this huge leakage problem and that that has to be fixed and that this is not a one-way fix to the customers of North Bend. We're going to be committing big dollars to getting some of these leakage projects fixed because that's really, when it comes to mitigation problems, probably a bigger problem than the water conservation ordinance. So I hope that that helps kind of ease some people's concerns that we're trying to put this on the backs of current customers, but we realize that we have to make our own bet, too.
All right. Thank you both. Next commenter we have is Scott Parish. Scott, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself. Scott, have you unmuted? Scott, have you unmuted yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, sorry about that. I will reiterate my point earlier that many of the points that people have raised tonight are things that were raised a year ago. I remember many of these conversations going down almost identically to a year ago. It seems like a poor use of everybody's time to have brought this back to us without having addressed many of these things. On the point of having rain barrels and other reservoirs to catch rainwater, it doesn't look to me like the current proposed legislation would allow using that water and not consider it to be a wasteful use of water. It looks to me like kid swimming pools would be prohibited, because, like, if I, if I wanted to have my toddler a six-inch swimming pool, it's not going to have a recirculation device on it, that's going to be prohibited. Irrigating lawns when it's raining, it's not uncommon that we get a light dusting of rain in August that does absolutely squat for the, the terrain. But if that falls on the one day where watering is allowed, then it's, we're prohibited from watering anything for a whole week. That seems ill-thought-out. And I'll reiterate, the hose seems really vague. It could apply to my washing machine. My washing machine has a hot water hose, and it does not require a positive pressure, so that could be considered waste. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We have Mike Thomas next, who would like to provide a comment. Mike, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself.
Sure, thank you, thank you very much, host. First of all, I want to thank everyone for participating. I personally have been participating in city infrastructure, both water and sewer, for probably four years, so you hear from me often. And this is something extremely complex, both water system plans, efficiency, and it's been a great learning experience. For those who don't know, I also am an ex-Salau board member as well. So I do want to also thank the awesome turnout of the Salau board members that are present, and again, thank you for your service. I do want to make a few final comments. I still personally struggle as to why this should apply to Salau users within the city. Even under the proposed contract, these two systems might experience independent water shortages. And, you know, certainly, I can see even cases where Salau may not even experience a problem in dry season, even under the, the contract. However, I do have some additional analysis that may, may need to, something may need to be done to look at this in more detail, especially with the rate of water. I would request that the city make its new drafts available to the public for the water system plan that might be interested, particularly, you know, the appendices on the wellhead protection. I think that would be very helpful. That's a complex topic and one of, one of importance. Certainly, we all want to know that, that the areas around our well are appropriately protected. So with, with that, and I guess one final comment is, I, I do, I do understand the need for some of the conservation. I lived in areas that had much more extreme water conservation, such as North Texas. They're not necessarily bad ideas, but I'm a little concerned that, that the motivation may be really to solve a really mitigation deficit and not really for our conservation. It really feels to me like this is an expedient solution to, to addressing really what is a mitigation shortfall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. We are coming, it looks like we have one more comment here from Jeff Kruger, and then we will be coming to the end of our meeting, if staff have any closing words after this. Go ahead, Jeff.
I just want to reiterate the fact that, that this is not a us versus them, or, you know, the citizens versus the council or anything else, because that's what a lot of these issues seem to come down to. Everybody here, in my opinion, in the city, or at least the vast majority of us, want to conserve. We want to try to keep the landscape, and I, by that, I mean the entire area, the surrounding area, as it has been for, you know, centuries, and, and that's why most of us moved out here. So we are all in this together, however, we want it well thought out, and we don't want this to come on the backs of just allowing unfettered growth. You know, it's, it's been brought up constantly, why is a city even, even considering finding Salau members that are not city water users? And I guess Lonnie has probably looked into that, but I have some questions as to the legality, as to whether the city even has a legal authority to find a non-city water user, unless you're going to try to tie it into the sewer usage. Last, the ordinance given here, what I saw, what Mr. Garcia saw, what Lonnie saw, everybody's thinking differently, so the, the language in there is obviously very confusing, and no offense to any of you, but I don't have a lot of confidence that this is not punitive in nature, given what I saw. I don't know how the city would be able to find people that are not city water users outside in the King County area, unless you're going to implement the Growth Management Act to see that they're inside that. However, the ordinance itself references city water users. So the whole thing seems to me to be kind of thrown together rapidly to try to continue to allow issuance of water certificates, and I think that's what this is really coming down to. We have a water issue, and we need to address it, but I think it needs a lot more work and not something that just should be thrown out there. Let's conserve so we can continue to, to build, because we don't have the resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, for your comment. Dave, if I could respond to a couple of the comments, and, and I understand that, Jeff, you believe it's punitive, the goal was never to be punitive, it was to address those folks that were using more water. The city does adopt regulations all the time that impact Salau members. We have fines and penalties for various other activities, we issue permits, council has clear legislative authority to adopt ordinances that cover folks residing within their corporate boundaries. We also have authority as a water purveyor to issue rules, regulations, and conservation measures for folks in unincorporated King County if we're delivering water to them. And I misspoke earlier, we're only talking about folks within our corporate boundaries or ratepayers within the North Bend Water Utility, where council has clear regulatory authority. Why should Salau members also be subject to conservation? The goal is to, for all of us, to be good fiduciaries of the water. It is not to be punitive, and I think I've mentioned this before, your council has done the opposite of promoting growth. They've actually taken a lot of steps through land use regulations, through moratoriums, to really address kind of the exponential residential growth. Council is interested in some commercial growth, however, so that they can deliver services to their citizens and provide enhancements to the city. And that really is the area where we have seen potential of growth. There is a sewer moratorium in place that basically, in essence, has created a moratorium on new residential growth. So I, I think it's, it's disingenuous to say that the count, that the city is doing this for more exponential residential growth. There was one comment about the hoses, and I think I want to clarify that we included an express exception on wasteful use of water for recreational use of water. That would include filling a kiddie pool, that would include running through a sprinkler. I understand that, Scott, you have an objection to having to put a positive pressure or reduction so that when a hose is turned on, you just don't have water gushing out. Maybe one of the ideas we look at through education is providing those to folks so that they have access to them. Certainly, it would not prohibit the, your ability to use a washer and dryer that's hooked up to plumbing and/or to provide water, potable water to a trailer. So we, we will work more on clarifying the ordinance, but I just want, I want people to understand why we're doing this. It is not to promote growth, it is really to conserve water. It's a limited resource.
I wanted to answer one of Michael Thomas's questions a couple minutes ago about the wellhead protection plan. In my opinion, it's a water purveyor's number-one function, it's to provide safe drinking water for its residents for public health, and, and we want to protect those well sources. So we will provide that wellhead protection plan on our website tomorrow that was done in late March or early April, so you can review it. You're on mute, Dave.
Bree, we've kind of reached past the bewitching hour, and we've got some good public input here. Do we have, have we gone through everybody? I think we've gone through everybody pretty well. I'm following the chat string, and it looks pretty good. I want to thank everybody for coming out and doing this. I think this is a better venue than a regular council public hearing, because we just turned it over to you for a while, and hopefully, we were able to answer some of your questions, and you certainly will influence our completion of this ordinance. I'm sure the council members listened closely, and so did we. And I thank you all for showing up and doing this. We will still be receiving written comments, so be sure and get them in to us. We've gotten quite a few, and we're looking forward to the public's complete involvement in it and coming up with something that makes us all happy. So thank you for tuning in for this, and I think with that, we will end the town hall.
And Dave, would we, let's remind folks, June 2nd, there's an additional opportunity to address the council.
Right. That would be the second reading of the water conservation ordinance. And as Mark indicated early, earlier, you have a month, month and a half to comment on the water system plan. So there's more input available, and we look forward to working with you to make both of these things work right. Thanks again, and goodbye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.